Good evening, I'd like to call to order the October 23rd, 2017, regular meeting. We're going to change it up a little bit tonight for the prayer and the pledge. Councilman Pizzillo will do the pledge, and then I've invited Reverend Dr. Suzanne Citron to speak tonight to give the prayer. And how I came about this, it was at our local club at Pebble Creek, and she gave the 9/11 prayer speech, that's how I have to say it, because, and it was so impressive, and it really took my heart. And so we tried to get her in at the 9/11, but we have a councilperson who is a fireman, and he really wanted to give it, and I understand that. So we postponed her till now. So this will be just a little bit different than the presentation from what you've normally heard, but Dr., thank you so much for doing this. So we're going to stand, and the pledge, right, Councilman Pizzillo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you all stay standing, please, Reverend.
I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and all of you from the council, and the public. Thank you all so much for inviting me here tonight. Let us be in a reverent mood. It was in the month of September, the year was 1814, and it was over 200 years ago. There is a fort, and this fort was in a Baltimore harbor, and oh, there was a fight, a fight against a formidable opponent, the Royal British Navy. And this navy bombarded this fort, Fort McHenry, with everything that the British Navy had. Now while this attack was happening, Francis Scott Key was inspired to write a poem that would later become the words to the Star Spangled Banner. He saw something, something incredible, that no matter what the odds were, no matter what, how dark it looked, he saw the flag was still standing. He writes, "At the dawn's early light, there it is, our flag still standing." Through these terrible fights, through the rocket's red glare, through the bombs bursting in air, the flag is still there. Well, today, there can still be overwhelming odds, there can be dark times, doesn't have to be in a time of war, but yet we should always have hope, always know that no matter what, this country still stands. It doesn't matter, no matter what goes on, it stands. Well, tonight, we are here, we are here with the public, we are here with our officers, with law enforcement and citizens, and we gather for a city council meeting. The agenda is prepared, there are going to be discussions, questions, answers, and maybe even votes will be taken. So we ask you, God, help us, help us to always remember that whether it's something like what you would see at a Fort McHenry, or a territory that becomes the state of Arizona in 1912, a piece of land that's established as a city called Goodyear in 1917, or a city council meeting that's being held tonight, 2017, no matter what faces us, no matter what challenges us, there is always the dawn's early light. So with our answers, our solutions, guidance for this incredible city, we do ask for a favor and a blessing upon this meeting tonight. We ask for a favor and blessing upon all of our law enforcement, fire, military, be with each and every one of them and their families, and we ask you, God, prepare each heart for what is going to happen here this evening, and bless this meeting. Amen.
You don't always clap for your prayer, but I'm clapping for this tonight, outstanding. Now you can all understand why I was so impressed, and so, thank you once again. God bless you. All right, I'm going to need a motion tonight, because we're missing Councilman Lori Tonell and Councilman Stip, so do I hear a motion?
So move, second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and Secretary of Councilwoman Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, thank you very much. We have one communication item, staff will provide a brief outline of the FY19 budget development process and calendar, including information on the changes to the capital improvement plan process. Budget and research, here you go, it's starting, isn't it? Manager Lori Wiganra to present, Lori?
Thank you, and yes, it's time to start the budget process again. Today, the departments, in fact, just moments before I got here, got their first spreadsheets to start the process, so we thought it'd be a good day to kind of give you an overview of the budget process we're planning in terms of coming and meeting with you and talking to you about the budget. We've tried to make a few changes based on feedback we've gotten both from you through the process last year and from departments. So the, after today, the next time you'll see us in a budget-related topic is in December. Jared Askelson, the Financial Services Manager, will be presenting the annual, the comprehensive annual financial report for FY17. That's done on a GAAP basis, which is slightly different than the budgetary basis, so we're also going to ask him to give you just a brief update on what the status of the general fund ending balance is in FY17, kind of to start to set the stage. Then in January, as we have in past years, we will come forward to present the five-year forecast for the general fund, and we will be doing that for one-time revenues, separate from ongoing revenues. We'll be projecting how the ongoing expenditures align with those ongoing revenues. We'll include items such as the operating cost of capital projects that are already planned or underway in the CIP, so that you can kind of see some of those things that are already coming forward in the future based on processes that we've already put in place, or plans that are already in place. In March, we will kind of change it up a little, we will be bringing forward the base budget in March. We will have that for the asset management funds, as well as the general fund, and we will be doing a revenue update at that point in time. When we do the five-year forecasts, we're talking mainly about revenues, but by the time we can come in March, we'll have a better idea on firming up the revenue estimates for this year and for next year, because we will have had some of those holiday sales tax activity. At that point in time, we want to recommend to you the base budget changes that have historically been handled through the supplemental process. We'd like to get the base budget firmed up, so that then we can share with you, here are the resources that are available for planning on supplementals and for compensation depending on where we are in the process at that point in time. And I'll note that we will, we've heard a lot of feedback about the timing of getting information for that March meeting, we'll get the information to you a week in advance, so you'll have a little bit longer to look at those materials. Then the next step in the process is that we plan to come to you in April in two separate meetings, and we are going to orient the presentation, this will essentially be the recommended balanced budget, coming from the city manager's office. We're going to approach it by doing the typical overviews of, you know, the status of the funds and those types of things, but then we're going to present it to you on a department by department basis, rather than, here's this group of supplementals or that group of supplementals, so you can get, experience the budget in terms of how it's impacting each department and have a better sense of that as we go through that process. We'll also have updates for you on the CIP process at that point in time, and this is another case where you'll have those materials a week in advance. And then, we are adding a meeting for council, I'm calling it council changes here, you know, we're going to listen to what you say in April at those meetings, and of course, what you say throughout the budget process, but we also then want to have another meeting where, as you've shared your thoughts, if we have to come back to you with some dollar amounts and those types of things, and you've had a chance to hear each other's comments, we want to give you a chance then to say, here's the final changes we'd like to make to the budget that the city manager has recommended, with the goal then that when we move into late May and June, we're just doing the technical steps of legally, of the statutory required process for adopting the budget. So we want to wrap up the budget decisions off that May 7th meeting. And what we'll try to do is, we'll go ahead and try to schedule the, I don't know if you remember last year, instead of doing a budget forum where we stood in front of the audience and did a presentation similar to what we do at work session, we had an open house for the public to come learn about the budget. We'll also try to schedule that open house between April 16th and May 7th, so we have any feedback that may have come through that process. And in terms of the CIP, I want to talk a little bit about the CIP and some changes that we were talking about, and I think there was some discussion at the council retreat as well about the CIP. We are proposing some changes that are going to be long-term or on an ongoing basis, as well as some changes for this year's process, to allow us to kind of really make some improvements in the CIP process. So on an ongoing basis, we're going to change to a five-year CIP. We will still identify those projects that are out there in that next five years, but we'll do that more as a list to say, here's what's coming, so that you know what's out there, and you can identify some of those priorities as well, you know they're there, we can start bringing them towards the forefront, they may come up in the next year's process, but in terms of the effort and the energy and the ability to forecast what our real needs are 10 years from now in terms of capital projects, that is...
Mine.
It's not going to be here.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure it's not me.
Okay, now I got off my... We will, it's way more valuable in terms of staff resources for us to focus on doing a much better job on those projects that are within the five-year forecasts that we do for funding sources, and if you look at the existing CIP, you'll notice those, like those seventh, eighth, ninth years, there's not a lot of resources there, because we don't have resources forecasted, there's no impact fees to plan on. So we'll be going to the five-year CIP on an ongoing basis. For FY19, we will be spending, for this year's process, we are going to focus heavily on FY18 and FY19 projects that are already in the CIP. Our goal will be to refine, define, revise the scopes of those process, those projects, so they are very clear, to identify what the deliverables are, to make sure those projects do have good cost estimates, given those more clear defined scopes, and to also make sure that we have a CIP, that we are 100% heading to getting it implemented, that the goal is to have a CIP that can be implemented. And so we think it would be a lot of value for us to take the time right now to really focus on those two years, and then we will also look at the next three years, primarily to, are there projects that are undercosted there, materially undercosted, and if there's any that should be pushed back based on what we learn as we go through this first two years. And then we will, you know, the other benefit to us of this is, we are implementing a new financial system, and we need to allocate staff resources to do a good job on that. One of the good things about that system is it has a better capital project accounting system in it, and that will help us, and we'd like to make sure we implement that with all of the functionality that will benefit us. And we're also going through an impact fee update right now, we're about a year away from having that complete, and that's, we're going to require the same resources that need to work on the CIP in terms of the departments and engineering in the finance department. So it's important that we really focus on getting that piece of the puzzle right as well, it needs that same kind of attention. Just checking my notes, haven't looked at this in a while, I was at a conference all day today. And then in terms of, you know, we're not saying there's not going to be the potential that projects can be added, but we're not going to be looking for adding new projects through this process, but there will certainly be points in the time, in fact, I didn't mention when I talked to you about the forecast, in January, that's a point in time when we'll be looking to the council to give us your ideas for the budget, supplementals you might be interested in, CIP projects you might be interested in, and if there's any high-priority CIP projects, we will certainly look at them through this process. And then we will, I want to remind you that you're welcome, and your feedback is wanted, welcome, we listen for it, you know, don't wait till January, if you have ideas, please share your feedback and your ideas with the city manager, whenever you have the opportunity, and we'll react based on what we have. That's what I have.
Well, that was, we could say a mouthful, wasn't it? I have to say, reading it today on my iPad or yesterday, I was very impressed by the steps and how thorough it's going to be, and council, any comments from any of you? Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Just, just one question, thank you for all of that, and I think the only question I have will be, just watching the process of this change to a five-year CIP, I guess the only reason I say that is because of seeing the CIP that went to five years when we were in the recession, you know, it was because, it was just, at that time, there was nothing, you know, and, and the worry was, once things started coming back into play, and we were able to expand and enlarge the CIP, many things that had been on that previous 10-year CIP got lost. And so that would be my only worry about this process, but the fact that you're saying there will still be some kind of, I'm assuming, appendix or something that shows, you know, the next five, so it's not actually lost, but it's just not giving as much focus to showing, is that, am I understanding that right?
Mayor, council member, yes, that's exactly, we will, we will have a list of all of the major projects that are in the existing 10-year CIP out there. If during the process during this year, other ideas come up that really are seven years away, we'll add them to that list, so that we are out there identifying them, knowing there's funding needed for those, so that we can, we, you know, we will, I'm considering, you know, we'll look for ways to publish that list, so that it's very clear that it's there. It is a good tool for you and for us.
Very good, thank you, and by the way, light pink is really your color.
Oh, thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo?
You know what, I think as a result of our retreat, one thing I'm kind of looking forward to is, CIP when it comes forward, is that we have project timelines for everything that's in there, and the reason being is, first of all, you've got to allocate resources to do it, so at some point you may look at it and go, it ain't going to happen, because we don't have enough resources to meet these timelines, so that's why I think that's a great exercise, to make sure you do the project timelines, and also the funding associated with it. So as opposed to just having one that says we have a project X that's going to be done in 1718, until you match them all up with timelines and resources, because sometimes we have a tendency where they either don't get started, or they end up rolling to the next, that's what I'm looking forward to seeing. Thank you.
I think also it sends a good message to the public, we're transparent, people can read what's going on at the council meeting, and I think this will be easily understood and exciting, I'm looking forward to it, Lori, nice, nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody out there like to speak? All right, then we'll go on, will the city clerk, we'll go to the consent agenda, will the city clerk please read consent agenda items, 6.1 through 6.9, by title only, please.
6.1, approved draft minutes from a special meeting held on September 18th, 2017, a special meeting and a regular meeting held on September 25th, 2017, and a regular meeting held on October 2nd, 2017. 6.2, approved budget transfers for FY17 and FY18. 6.3, approved the bulk water agreement between the City of Goodyear and Liberty Utilities, Litchfield Park Water and Sewer Corp. 6.4, approved the issuance of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, APS, associated with the Phoenix Goodyear North Airport Superfund Site Extraction Well 11. 6.5, approved the acceptance of a water line easement associated with the development of Lot 3B Beck Property Final Plat, which will contain a new three-inch water meter vault. 6.6, accept the Urban Area Security Initiative, UASI, Chemco-Biological Radiological Nuclear Explosive, CBRNE, Response Team, Sustainment Enhancement Grant of $59,690 from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, and authorize the city manager or designate to execute all documents necessary to administer the grant award and the required FY18 budget transfer for $59,700. 6.7, approve the final plat for Hudson Commons, subject to stipulations. 6.8, approve the final plat of Estrella Parcel, 9.1, subject to stipulations. 6.9, approve a request from Ryan Whitner Anderson, agent for the Cantomea at Estrella Community Association, for a permanent extension of premises patio permit for liquor license number 14073061. The Cantomea at Estrella Community Association is located at 17700 West Star Point Drive, Goodyear, Arizona 85338, generally located at the northwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Cedarwood Lane.
Thank you, does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item? Councilman Hampton?
I have a question.
Sure, on which one?
They're for, both for Katie, 6.7.
6.7, on Hudson Commons?
You might be able to answer without Katie, but are we able to, we've heard, come on.
Here she comes, just give her a minute.
Yeah.
Katie, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
I have a quick question, so, for these final plats, do we, are we used to seeing, like...
Bring that microphone up to you, please.
Are we used to seeing what the final plats, what it's going to look like, or what the, actually, the products are going to be in the area, or things like that?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, the residential design review process, which is the review of the homes, is it administrative review process, similar to commercial design review, so that doesn't typically come before city council? Often with the rezoning or the preliminary plat, they may have an idea of the product, but the residential design review is administrative process.
Okay, okay, I think that's everything else in here, okay, I think I'm good with that one, and then, 6.8, when's the timing of the first house going in that, in the new fire station, do we know, up in Estrella? Roughly?
I think we need to bring the fire chief up. So the question was, the fire station that would be in the area of the Estrella Parcel 9.1?
I'm sure we already talked about this at one point, but...
That's all right.
So for our south station, south of Ray Road, we're anticipating that to be July to October 2019.
2019, okay, and the first houses will probably be going before that, I would imagine, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Good questions, anybody else? All right. So let's have, I need a motion, in a second.
The move, second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second by Councilwoman Osborne, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lori?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're going to go on seven in the business, and there's been a change, I'd like to remind council to refrain, first of all, from asking questions until staff presentations are complete and there's a motion on the table. So the first item on business is to consider postponing indefinitely a preliminary plat for the Vista's at Palm Valley. So...
Do the motion?
I'm sorry, what?
You need a motion.
I need a motion for delaying it, okay, so could I have a motion in a second, to indefinitely postpone, which I really don't like that word, so don't get angst about it, you can ask questions after we get the motion on. Agenda item 7.4 for Vista's at Palm Valley, preliminary plat, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Pizzillo, and a second from Councilwoman Hampton, open for council discussion, so I think there's people...
Yeah, yeah.
Pardon?
Just curious, curious, the situation.
Yes, I know you're going to be curious, if you don't, I think somebody needs to explain, I said the same thing, I didn't want to, I actually didn't want to say it, I said, can't we reword this? So go ahead.
Mayor and council, I can, I can explain, the applicant, Meritage Homes, contacted us today and asked for this postponement, they are in the process of going through an annexation process to join the Palm Valley Community Center, and they had initiated that and had expected it to be completed as of last week, but they found out that there were some problems with the notice that was provided. The association's management company apparently failed to send out all of the notices that needed to be sent out to conduct the election, and so, the decision to participate in the community, or community center, has some relationship to their purchase agreement, and so they did not want to complete the approval of the preliminary plat until they have a response on that, which they expect will occur prior to your next meeting on November 13th, but rather than postpone it to a specific date, we left it open-ended, they can be rescheduled at any time, there's no public notice requirements, and as long as they give us about a week's notice that they want to be on the agenda, then we can accommodate them.
Don't go away, questions? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Joe, what are the, what are the mechanics, when you say there's a vote, is it all association members, homeowners that vote on that to allow them in, or is it the board that votes?
Mayor Lori, Councilmember Pizzillo, I have to apologize, I'm not familiar with the process myself. Bruce Schroeder from Meritage Homes is here tonight, I don't know if I can ask Bruce to come up and...
Can we do that?
If he can elaborate.
Yes, please have him come up.
So I'd rather defer to...
I think you're right, I think you're wise to do that, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Bruce Schroeder with Meritage Homes, 8800 East Rain Tree, Scottsdale, Arizona, mayor and council. Yeah, there was a glitch in the mailing, there were supposed to be 1,100 ballots go out, only about 136 went out, so therefore we had to postpone the vote, it's up till next week now, so, but basically to answer your question is, out of the voting people, whoever votes, we have to get 75% of those voting people on our side to get annexed. It doesn't, it's not the 1,100, 75%, 1,100, it's 75% of the voting people, so we want to wait for that until we get, go on with our preliminary plat, because if we don't get that, then we have to look at something different with the common area, so that's why we asked to pull it.
Any count, go ahead, Joe.
Hypothetical, again, I don't like dealing with hypotheticals, but hypotheticals, if that doesn't happen, you probably form your own HOA, is that probably what you're looking at?
Yes.
So it's not like it's going to be lost, okay, it's just going to be a delay.
It's just a delay that we have with our contract with our owners of the property, and we need to have that before we proceed, so...
And I don't think that's the first time that that's happened with HOAs.
It was, it was a little unusual, because it's the same HOA that we use for our management company, we use for everybody, it was a glitch on their part, and, and we didn't notice it until when we found out that they only had 136 actually get mailed, so out of 1,100, it's a pretty good, big mistake, so that's why we won't postpone it.
Thank you for calming us all, because we're looking forward to that development, so everybody was really, the ears perked up, I saw that, so thank you very much for explaining.
And we apologize for being last minute, but we just, you know, had determined that it was best for us to delay it.
No problem, we have to do what we have to do, so, all right, let's vote on this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? The ayes have it. So the next item on business is a public hearing to consider Series 10 liquor license for Circle K, Circle K Store, number 9528, so I'm going to open the public hearing, and Deputy City Clerk Sue Rungart will present, Sue?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, the city clerk's office received an application for a Series 10 liquor license for the new Circle K Store at 1550 North Pebble Creek Parkway, which is near the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway, excuse me. A Series 10 liquor license is for a beer and wine store, which authorizes a sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. Circle K is in the process of purchasing the property, if any, if everything goes according to plan, they will begin construction in approximately one year, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the ayes like to speak? All right. Then I'm gonna close the public hearing, and could I have a motion in a second to approve the request from, and I'm not gonna be well, do well on this name, but Kim Karakowski, agent for Circle K Stores Inc., DBA Circle K Store number 9528, for a new Series 10 liquor license, number 10076905, located at 1550 North Pebble Creek Parkway, Goodyear, Arizona at 85338. That's generally located the southwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Campbell. So open for council discussion. Councilman Osborne?
Thank you, Sue. You know, it's funny, I'm sitting here trying to rack my memory as to us ever approving a liquor license for a facility we've never even approved to build yet, and I truly cannot recall. I have, I have a problem with that. I, you know, I, I feel like it's the cart before the horse type of scenario. I guess, Rourke, I don't understand the legality of, how can you do that when we, I mean, because they're gonna have to come to us for a special use permit and all those other things to even build their property. This seems odd to me.
It does seem odd, and I don't recall us doing it this way either. I could be wrong. They're usually very close in time, but I don't believe there's anything necessarily illegal about the license submittal to the state at this point, so...
Okay, so, a follow-up then, I would rather not say no, but a, this is just me, I don't like this, this scenario. I would rather postpone it till it made more sense that we were doing the special use permit for the building at the same time. I just, I don't understand this process. I don't like it.
Right, so tell me what the process is, because if we say no, it's still yes. It goes down to the...
Right.
Yeah, your vote is in your hearts, but it doesn't do anything about that.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, there is one that I do recall. I'm not sure about the approval of the building plans or not, but Winko Store did apply a couple of years ago for their liquor license, and it was approved.
And it would seem to me that it makes sense, if you're building a building and you decided to have liquor, that you want to design it around that. Otherwise, you would design it for something else. Did you hear what I just said?
I apologize. No.
Okay, I'm gonna repeat it. I'm gonna repeat it, because you two were talking.
I am sorry.
So what we're looking at is, if you're going to have liquor in a store or a restaurant or what, so you're gonna design the brick and mortar around that, so that there is room, and it's well-served, and looks good, and, 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 so it's not gonna be in the peanut butter section, so...
It's Circle K.
You know, you have to think of it that way. And thank you for remembering that, because that's so true about Winko.
But we had, but we had approved Winko, though.
Yeah, I'm not certain about that part.
Yes, you may.
Can we assume that this liquor license is only for that location on Pebble Creek Parkway, and if it is not built, then that liquor license cannot be used there?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other question? Yeah, Councilman Stip. I mean, Pizzillo. I knew I'd do it. I knew I'd do it.
Stip speaking.
Stip Junior.
The question I have is, and it's probably more for the lady, because I'm not sure of the process itself, but even if this is approved, we, the actual, since it's gotta come back for a, what is it, a use permit? The design, will the design of the building itself come before us for approval, or is that administratively? And then what happens is, is the use permit, will we have any input on what that's gonna look like on that corner? I guess is my question.
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, we are actively working with Circle K on the use permit application. It's been through one review, a staff review already, and we're expecting their response shortly, and tentatively working to get that to Planning Commission and Council likely in December, or the very first part of January is when we're thinking that it's gonna be in front of the council. In terms of the actual building design, with the special use and use permits, typically in the past, the city has been, the staff has been showing you the conceptual elevations. Of course, those designs are actually administrative, and we use our design standards and so forth. So that is an administrative process, but we always have shared the conceptual elevations with council as those are coming forward.
I appreciate that, Christopher, because, because of where that is gonna be located, and I don't know about my fellow council members, but I would really appreciate seeing conceptually what that's gonna look like.
And Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, I'll also share with you that Steve Careci with our office has done a fantastic job of working with Grace Development on, and Circle K, in ensuring that, because it is a very prominent corner, and I can assure you that there's been some communication, most recently as of today, and we're very much in agreement in the direction that this is moving as a high-quality project, so...
Great, thank you. Any other question?
Thank you.
All right, let's have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. The next item is 7.2, is a public hearing to consider the amendment to the Estrella Commons Plan Area Development. Just to remind you, this is a public hearing that was continued from October 2nd, 2017, regular meeting, so we don't have to hit the gavel on this one. So Steve Careci, Planner 3, to present. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is a PAD amendment for Estrella Commons, a multifamily piece. What we have is, on the screen here, this is the overall Estrella Commons Plan Area Development. The piece we're looking at is down here, but you can see it kind of nestles right here with Estrella Parkway and the Bullard Wash, I-10 to the north, Van Buren to the south. We have a couple existing neighborhoods, Rancho Mirage here, Centerra, then we hit the Centerra Commercial, Hudson Commons Commercial, then here all along the west side of Estrella, we have all commercial uses. PAD zoning for Estrella Commons, originally adopted in 2006. The last PAD amendment for this property was in 2015. And the current proposal is this 22.7 acres. This right now is zoned preliminary PAD, and it's designated with this district land use. And what that district land use is, it's a, it's a mixture of land uses allowed, commercial, retail, services, and residential, all within this one district. The change tonight is to change this to multifamily, go from that district mixed-use area to a single-use multifamily district. And this is what would occur here. We now have this as the south multifamily residential district. And as a PAD amendment, we do have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for this change. And with the PAD amendment, we did have a development plan submitted, and it is for a multifamily development. It is the type of development that is all one-level, single-story buildings, all detached, one unit. Typically have one or two bedrooms per unit, and again, all single-story units. Will have two points of access, one here, Fillmore will be extended to the east, and they will connect here at Fillmore. The second point of access will be down here at Van Buren. This will be a gated community with private streets. Density's about almost 13 units per acre. Conceptually, right now, we're looking at about 287 units in this development. And this is the property here with Van Buren and Fillmore extended. These are those commercial uses that will be adjacent to it. And this is a more detailed view of what the multifamily development will look like. Because it's private and it's gated, the applicant will be providing a sidewalk down here along this west side, and then here along this southern portion, along with several connections from the development to that sidewalk, here, here, and then here, which will allow the residents of this development to access a lot of this commercial uses here, as well as the residential that's planned north of this community, to have a nice, safe pathway down, and then across, access all of those uses there. We had a neighborhood meeting on August 30th. There was no opposition voiced at the neighborhood meeting. Because it is a public hearing, we did post the property, send out the postcards to 500-foot property, it was within 500 feet, and we did do our legal ad. We did not receive any opposition to this project. Planning and Zoning Commission, September 13th. Again, no opposition voiced on this project at the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, as stipulated, staff and the commission, we are recommending approval of this project. We do find it consistent with the general plan and compatible with the surrounding area. As such, we are recommending approval subject to stipulations that are listed in ordinance 17-1368. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant, Mr. Paul Gilbert.
All right, thank you, Steve. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody like to speak? It's in the audience. Did the applicant want to speak before I close this public hearing? Steve? Did the applicant want to speak before I close the public hearing?
The applicant does not.
All right, thank you very, thank you very much. Well, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 17-1826 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 17-1826 declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Estrella Commons Planned Area Development dated August 9th, 2017.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Come on.
In a second?
Come on.
All right, I heard it from Councilman Osborne, and a second from Vice Mayor Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizz, Pizzil, Pizzillo?
That's a new one.
Oh, well, I got them both in this time. That way, I need a little for air, right? Go ahead.
Is this product similar to the one off of Indian School?
Mayor, council? Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm not, you know, I can't see the menu, but I assume there's a pool and some type of office complex that's gonna be within here, with maybe some workout stuff? Do you know? Is that what the design is in there?
I think we need to have the applicant come up.
Applicant?
Yes, please.
For your record, my name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street. Madam Mayor and Councilman, the answer is yes. Thank you. Now I can charge my client for appearing tonight. I appreciate your question.
Anything I can do here for you, Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions? I don't know, we have them up there? Joe?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I like the idea of these single-story units, because sometimes transition from a, from a home, and you have to go into your apartments, or even if you're retiring into that, the fact they're single-story, and you have that gap between the units, from a noise standpoint and all that, I, I think this product's gonna do very well, so, again.
Thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. I like the product. It's cute, and I think that the density for the commercial that's in that area is helpful. I also, you know, typically, we don't like to, I hate to use the word downgrade, but change zoning from commercial to housing. Any kind of jobs to housing is not the typical kind of zoning change we like to do, but I think this is proper for this, this area, and I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, may I comment? That's the first time I've had a project called cute, so, thank you very much.
Well, we'll put that in your vocabulary now. Any other? Any other? Okay, well, then we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we're going to the second part of it. Will the city clerk please read ordinance Number 17-1368 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 17-1368, conditionally amending the Estrella Commons Planned Area Development by rezoning approximately 22.7 acres to final planned area development, to amend the land use designation for the approximate 22.7 acres to multifamily residential, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne, and a second by Councilman...
This guy.
Anan. All right, open for council discussion. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your response. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Good to see you again, Mayor.
Nice to see you. The next item, 7.3, and business is consider approving the preliminary plat for Estrella Commons. Steve's back on the, for the presentation. Planner 3, Steve Careci.
Thank you again, Mayor, council members. We are still within the Estrella Commons PAD. What we have is, we've moved north a bit, and we have this area outlined here in red. And what we have tonight is a subdivision plat. We have the zoning that was approved in 2015 to allow the single-family residential within Estrella Commons, so we're following up with a subdivision plat. Prior to that, we did have a previous plat approved in 2016. However, we have a new developer, Fulton Homes is the developer now behind this subdivision, and they went with a redesign of the area that we are showing tonight in the plat. This area is about 105 acres, and the proposal is for 429 single-family homes. Density's about four dwelling units per acre. The two lot sizes, we have a 50 by 115, there'll be about 300 of those, and then there'll be about 60 by 120. There'll be about 120 lots in that portion. And this is the layout. What we have in the north third, we'll have the 50-foot-wide lots, generally located here. We'll transition to some 60-foot-wide lots here and along the wash, and then as we get further south, this third will be the rest of the 50-foot-wide lots. Within the subdivision, it will be all public streets. We'll have three points of access. Roosevelt Street will be extended east, as well as Fillmore Street that we discussed earlier with the prior case. And then we have a connection here, 151st, that will connect to the existing Rancho Mirage About 17% of development is open space, it's about 18 acres. Two main park sites. We have one here, about two and a half acres, sports fields, ball courts, Ramadas, tot lots. Kind of a mirror down here in the southern half, again, about two and a half acres, same type of amenities. The developer will also be proposing connections to allow for opportunities to connect to the future Bullard Wash when that happens, as well as providing for opportunities for connections here and here, when those commercial areas develop in the future, providing connections to there to provide for, you know, bicycle and pedestrian opportunities for our future We also have here, along the north part of the subdivision, an 80-foot buffer that was provided, that will be planted with 36-inch box trees. Then we also have a sound wall that will be developed here, be about 17 to 20 feet in height along here, and it'll wrap around here and here. And then from the sound wall to the freeway, you have another anywhere from about 85 to 110 feet before you hit the travel lanes. Planning and Zoning Commission, they heard this item this month, October 11th. There was no opposition to the plat voiced by the commission.[1764.33] With that, staff and the planning and zoning commission, we find the plat is consistent with the PAD zoning for this parcel, as well as our development regulations. As such, we are recommending approval subject to the 13 stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bull. And if there's any questions following that, we'll certainly invite you up. Thank you very much. So, just a minute, I lost my place. So could I have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary plat for Astraea Commons, subdividing 105.73 acres into 429 single-family lots and 40 tracts, approximately located the southeast corner of Interstate 10 in Astraea Parkway within the Astraea Commons Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations? Do I hear motion?
Come on.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Councilman Pizillo. A second. Open for council discussion. Who would like to start? Councilman Hampton?
Sir, I had a quick question. So is there a, this is more aesthetics, but is there a walk path or a bike path around the entire Fulton Homes pad there, area? Does that make sense?
You mean within the, within it, or the one?
Yeah, within or around. I've seen some other developments where there's like a bike path or a walking path.
Within the development?
Walkability, within the development, like around the perimeter of it.
Mayor, council members, this exhibit is their trails map for the development, and you can see they have one through here, through the buffer. All the streets will have sidewalks on it. They'll have connections here and here, and then the connections to the future Bullard Wash that we spoke of. So this right, this exhibit here shows the trails.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to see. Okay, that's one question I had, and then, kind of in line with this, but does the commercial part to the west and the multifamily, are those already final-platted?
Those preliminary still? Those plans now have not been finalized yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I'll wait.
Councilman Osborne?
Oh.
I know you were going to wait, but you're on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fulton Homes, thank you for coming to Goodyear, and I know you've always had outstanding products and good family subdivisions, and I thank you for that. You know, if you wanted to completely do Bullard Wash while you're out there, I'd be okay with that. You know, I just, just thought I'd throw that out to you. The, the hard part for this project, and I'm sure that our friend at Bull has told you, I have a hard time with homes abutting the freeway, and that has been 16 years that I've been on this council and planning zoning, I don't vote for it. And so, I don't want you to take that personally. It's the fact that I just, as a citizen, don't want homes against a freeway. And, and even though this was zoned a while back, even our own general plan, our own citizens has said they don't want homes against a freeway. And so, I apologize, but I'm going to have to vote against this one because that's just one of those hard lines for me that I, I don't go over. Thank you.
You going this side? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
I just would like to thank Fulton Homes for the well-planned park areas and the Ramadas and the tot lots, because that will be a real focal point in that community, and we're really excited to see how it ends up when it's built out. But we thank them very much for coming to Goodyear, and we look forward to welcoming more residents in our city.
Councilors and all.
I talked to Mr. Bull earlier about this. My, my biggest concern was smaller lots. As you drive up and down the road with the different elevations, that you have multiple elevations, which they can't be right next to each other. So in other words, you can't have two right next door, so when you're going up the street, you get lost because everything looks the same. Is that a fair assumption? I'm not sure. I see the shaking of the heads, but...
Mr. Bull, would you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Pizillo. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, again, representing Fulton Homes. Norm Nichols, the president of Fulton Homes, and a number of others from the engineering team are here with me. Fulton has over 20 floor plans and four elevations per plan. So diversity is important to Fulton Homes, as it's important to you and the couple.
It is to more. I, I like it where they don't look same right next to each other. The plans is going to be based on whatever moves product-wise, I understand that. But when you're going down the street, I like to see where you have different elevations, not right next to each other, kind of spread them out so that it does look like a very diverse type of neighborhood. So again, I appreciate that, Mr. Bull.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just want to say welcome to you.
Yes.
So, yeah, well, I know Fulton has a great reputation in the community, and I, yeah, I think it's great that you guys are coming here, and I, like all I said as well, the places where families can meet and gather within the community are, are good for our citizens, and, yeah, I just want to say, yeah, thank you for coming to Goodyear as well, so, looking forward to it.
Well, you know I'm thrilled. I toured the homes, and they're what we call homes. They're not products, they're not units, they're homes. And they all have a very inviting entry to them, and they meet all the needs. I mean, they have different, different looks for just about anything and everybody's opinion. So, again, thank you. I'm really excited to get this started. It's going to be very visible where the location is, very needed, and it's giving us the density that we need in our city, and the commercial is going to be very, very happy. Can you imagine on that street what it's going to be like? So, thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it.
Pardon? I was a nay.
She was a nay. Oh, I'm sorry, take that back. I should remember, I have it tattooed on my arm. Just a moment. We, we have one nay, and the rest are all ayes. Okay. Let's go down. You're quite welcome. Safe trip back home. Thank you. All right, the next item, 7, I'm sorry, Councilman Osborne. I got caught up in the joy of having them build in our city.
Nice.
Yeah. Does that help a little bit? Okay. I'm going to wait just one moment. All right, we'll go to 7.5 on business is consider approving the Rural Metro Settlement Release and Contract for the Mutual Aid Fire EMS Response. Fire Chief Paul Louiezi to present. Paul?
Evening, Mayor and Council. As you said, tonight, I'm here to ask for you to approve the Rural Metro Settlement and Release, and then also subsequently the Contract for Mutual Aid with Rural Metro. So just a little background with them, we've been working with the Rural Metro Fire Department for, for many, many years. However, in 2002, council at the time took an opportunity to look at their relationship that they have with Rural Metro, and they determined that they were going to terminate their agreement at that point because they felt like it didn't have a lot of benefit for the City of Goodyear. Just about a year later, in 2003, August of 2003, city council reconsidered its position at that time, and then entered into an oral agreement with Rural Metro Fire Department. So from October 2003 until August 2013, Rural Metro paid all of their bills. So anytime the Goodyear Fire Department responded to assist them in a mutual aid situation, they paid their, their invoices without any issues. In 2013, they actually entered bankruptcy at that point, so they stopped paying their bills to the City of Goodyear. Once they came out of bankruptcy, the City of Goodyear made multiple attempts to try to receive some of the money that they owed us, and really tried without any luck. Fortunately, with the help of legal services, we were able to get them to pay a settlement to the City of Goodyear in September of 2017, and they settled their previous debt of $82,989 for $40,000. But they would also provide a security and performance bond to the City of Goodyear for $30,000, and also enter into a new mutual aid agreement that we both agreed on. Also, within that, they provided an administrative processing fee of $500 if any of the bills were late to the City of Goodyear. And that actually kicks in after 60 days, not 30 days as I had thought. So, staff analysis at this point, we like the settlement, we agree with it, we know it's not the full amount that we wanted, but it's, it's what we had settled on. And also, we feel like the mutual aid agreement is fair for both jurisdictions, for Rural Metro Fire Department, and also for the City of Goodyear. We don't have a lot of calls for service from them. So far this year, we've responded to only seven calls from mutual aid services to them. And we feel like they, they will be a good partner in this contract. There are several other cities that have this same contract, Peoria, Avondale, and they've been operating with them without any difficulty whatsoever. So our recommendations tonight would be to, for council to approve the Rural Metro Settlement and Release, and then also approve the Contract for Mutual Aid Fire and EMS Response between Rural Metro and the City of Goodyear.
Thank you, Chief.
Now, available for any questions?
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? All right. Could I please have a motion a second to approve the settlement and release of the mutual aid agreements between Rural Metro Fire Department, Inc., and the City of Goodyear for Fire and Emergency Services? Do I hear motion?
Come on.
Second.
All right, our motion from Councilman Osborne, a second from Vice Mayor Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizillo.
Just mechanics, this isn't your typical, now, let me rephrase it. Is this your typical mutual aid in which whoever's the closest calls, or they have to ask you to call on something?
Yeah, so Rural Metro is a private fire department, and they service a lot of the unincorporated county areas. So this would be a scenario where they would call and ask us. This would not be an automatic response by the City of Goodyear Fire Department.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's fine. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, if I can, I just, I'd like to thank the legal services, Rourke and Lisa Maxi Mullins, they were awesome trying to help us get through all of this, so.
Well, that's very kind of you. We appreciate their work. All right, so let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. The next item on business is consider approving the appointment of the interim city manager. Human Resources Director Lyman Lockett will be presenting. Lyman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the city manager recruitment process, tonight, I'm here to bring forward a proposed action to appoint an interim city manager during an anticipated vacancy period in which our current city manager will have vacated the position, and the new city manager will have started. The vacancy period is expected to be about four to six weeks, and the expected time in which this assignment would begin would be January the 6th, 2018. And the interim period would last until the new city manager is in place.
Can I have a motion in a second? To appoint the interim city manager effective January 6th, 2018, determined which will end when a new city manager assumes the role. Do I hear a motion?
Come on.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, a second from Councilman Pizillo. Open for council discussion. No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Madam Mayor, you have to state a name to who the person's going to be.
Okay. You want to state the names, since I don't have my list here?
So, as, as part of the process, council has deliberated, and Dan Cotterman has been the individual who council would like to appoint, and that will allow for kind of a seamless process of continuation of government, as well as ongoing projects to continue within the city.
Did you mention the names?
Mr. Lyman stated Dan Cotterman. Is that the council desire as far as the motion?
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear you echoing for me. All right, so are we all right to make a vote now?
Yes.
All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. And just so that you said that, could you repeat that one sentence about this?
Sure.
This appointment is just during the interim time?
Yes, just during the interim time. Once a new city manager is hired, appointed, and in place, the interim assignment would end.
All right. Thank you.
So it's, it's the duration, so if it's longer than a month, it would keep going until we get the final person?
Correct.
So we don't do month by month, so, okay, good.
Okay, all right. I can't believe it's 7:04, and here we are.
How'd that happen?
So, council comments and where we've been this week and what we've done? Councilman Osborne?
I just, I just wanted to read something that I found this morning that, real quick. But, you know, as we continually always search for retailers and restaurants and understanding, you know, what our citizens are desiring and keep asking for, you know, this, this unfortunate article really is something that people really need to be, to be understanding. And it says retailers should brace for a painful 2018. 2017 hasn't been easy, and next year may not be much better. Ratings agencies, Fitch, expects the retail industry to endure up to $7 billion in defaults in the coming year, with Neiman Marcus, J. Crew, and Talbotz considered likely candidates. Traditional retailers, oh dear, I just lost it. Traditional retailers continue to struggle as consumers shift toward online options like Amazon. The retail apocalypse is expected to claim some 6,400 stores this year. Wet Seal, Payless Shoe Store, Toys R Us, and a slew of other retailers have declared bankruptcy in recent months. So I just, you know, it's, it's something that I think a lot of people aren't understanding the true picture of what's going on out there. And so, I just, you know, I know that sounds, it's a downer, but it's reality, and so sometimes our citizens just need to understand what we're facing, because a lot of time, they think that we're just not doing the work for it, and it's, it's just the bear that's the battle going on right now, so.
I appreciate it, but I have to say, it's in the citizen's hands. It's their choice to either buy online or in a brick and mortar, and so we're finding that convenience is, is, is winning out so far. Anybody else talk about where you've been, what's going on? Vice Mayor?
I just would like to thank Bruce Kesselman and all of the staff for the wonderful Harvest Festival that we had Saturday night. The folks that I spoke with were so excited, they look forward to every event we have, and every event we have, it gets better, they add something new. Joanne, they had a darling train that your grandbabies would have loved to have ridden around the infield, that they brought from vendor and channeler. So it's always something new and fresh, and the Friends of the Library had a very successful book sale, and we're happy with that. Mayor, you're going to talk about the school lunch.
What?
The school lunch?
All right, well, I won't take... Yeah, go ahead.
Then I'll just, I'll skip that. I went to the Assistance in Healthcare Board meeting this week, and we were able to award 157 cancer patients with actual cash grants for the month, and most of it came from the Project Pink Lunch that was held last Friday. I attended the Area Agency on Aging Board meeting, and it was determined that we have over 1,500 senior citizens in Maricopa County waiting to get in-home health services, either bathing, shopping, cleaning, and there's never enough money to provide all of the workers that we need. I also went to the Southwest Family Advocacy Center Open House, and they took over a couple of businesses that were in the same building, and they've been able to expand their, their use, their rooms that they're using. I hated to see the expansion because it means we have more children that they're serving, but it's wonderful that we're able to partner with law enforcement and with Phoenix Hospital, Phoenix Children's Hospital, and with New Leaf to provide the services that are apparently are very needed in our city. And I went to DC Thursday and Friday.
I heard that.
And I met with the National League of Cities, and I was able to speak with two presidents of corporations that own restaurants throughout the United States, and I'm hoping that the, that it'll be fruitful. I gave them the information who to call.
Any other? Yes, Councilman Anan.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Michelle and her team for the bid for Amazon, so, thank you for that. And then, also, I want to get more information. I know Make a Difference Day is this weekend, and I was hoping to maybe go and attend or, or make a difference somewhere. So, yeah, I'm looking forward, volunteers are the key, big cornerstone to our community, and it's going to be a great event, so, so, yeah, just wanted to hear more about that eventually.
Well, we had a couple... Anybody else? We had a tour of the West Valley Veterans Building at the base, an early tour, and it was, it's really impressive, and the agenda for how they're going to help the vets is very impressive, very organized, and they'll take them from the beginning to their final destination where they want to work and what they want to do. It's very impressive. It's very impressive, so I, I think I'm, yeah. Councilman Fazillo, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
He changed his mind.
Yeah.
Okay, let it be known, you changed your mind, it wasn't the mayor. Thank you.
I'm confused between Fazillo and Stip, but I'm working on it. I changed my mind. I got to serve lunch, and to me, it's one of the perks of jobs, and I know the mayor did it.
I did it.
And I think Wally did it.
Joanne did it.
Joanne did it too, over at Palm Valley Elementary School, and I truly believe that's one of the perks of the job. I love it. Was serving to the second, fourth, and fifth graders. And two of my granddaughters are in, one's in second, one's in fifth, and I had the best time. They would come up, some of the kids would come up and actually pretend like they were, what would you say, a newspaper reporter, and they were asking me questions.
Oh, yeah.
What did you like about the job? What'd you think about the, you know, I mean, and they were really serious. They had just like a little pencil and paper, and it's, I don't know, I just, I just, I thought it was very, very cute. So, set a new trend with the fishnet hat, and it was all good, so. And I got some pictures of it, it's out there. So, never shy away from doing that kinda stuff. But anyway, it was a blast, and I had a great time doing it.
I know, I know how, that's one of your favorite things to do. I just wanna mention that the celebration for the Manufacturing Month, Houtumaki, really well done from economic development. They did a great job, and really, Michelle, we really appreciate it. It was well organized, and I think everybody there had a good, a good time. And you, you have to go for a tour of the building, don't you think? We talked about that building before, and the condition it was in, and it's absolutely a beautiful, beautiful building. The other thing I wanna really, Southwest Valley Advocacy Center, did anybody else have a chance to go? Well, if you didn't, please stop by. It is unbelievable. I mean, I can remember going there when it first opened up. Every floor is, is so well, it's welcoming. Every room is welcoming. You can see that when our citizens are at the advocacy and they're, and they're in an emotional state, they have, they have psychologists and nurses and, and people there, and all the different organizations from the different police and fire, all there to help somebody. You just have to go up. I mean, I can't even explain it. I was so impressed by it. So, if you haven't been, please take time and go see it. It's pretty spectacular. And then, council, you didn't even mention anything, getting to know your city. Are you gonna talk about that at all, that we went out and the in-room coffee? Well, how'd you feel about it?
Oh, you know what? I thought it was great. And, you know, citizens, we had quite a few come, and of course, it was kinda funny hearing the two topics I was hearing the most about was education, which we really have nothing to do with, but that was a, a topic of, of conversation. And then the other one I'd like to call the un-mal, the, that was the other part of the other conversation. But a lot of curiosity, a lot of what's going on here, what's happening there. Some people didn't understand the concept of it. They were expecting like, you were gonna give a presentation, you know, they wanted to hear, well, I can't hear what the mayor's saying over there, and you know, it was just, it was unusual, but I, I told citizens, well, you're our guinea pigs, we're trying this out, see how it comes. But I thought it was, it was a nice turnout, I thought.
What'd you think, Brandon?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't there as long as some of the people, but I thought it was a very good turnout, a lot of people there, a lot of support from staff, which was good too. Also, it's that, the non, that nonprofit that had all the photos on the walls was there too, to answer questions, so that was neat as well. And, yeah, just a lot of, I think people were just excited to ask questions and, and be a part of the community and
Yeah.
Learn, learn about the community. I didn't, yeah, I thought it was, it was good overall, so.
So, I, I gather, we're looking for, looking forwarding, we're looking forwarding to the next one, is that right?
I'll be there.
And you'll be there. It was really good. And again, I also served lunch, then, together, Joanne and I did, at Mabel Page at Elementary School. And I don't think I've ever done so many high fives before. And the screaming mayor wanted to shake the hand, finally I couldn't, I couldn't handle the crowd, so I just high-fived them all. So it really was nice. So, a question, so, any, can you talk about the annual, the, the annual Fall Festival? Because I did not, I had to cancel at the last minute. I felt really badly about that. I don't usually do that, but I just couldn't attend. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the interim city manager right now to just focus in on that, please?
Mayor, thank you. I, I had three updates tonight. One of them was the Fall Festival. If that's okay, I'll go through those for you. So the two thousand and eighteen Fall Festival was held this Saturday, October twenty-first, at the Goodyear Ballpark, and we drew a record crowd of nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight this year, which is a four percent
Nice.
Last year.
Yeah.
And it's been mentioned, but there was a lot going on. We had musical performances all evening by Anderson Institute of Music, as well as performances by Australia Gymnastics, Stepping Out Performing Arts, and Juice Box.
Great.
Hundred and fifty participants in the costume contest. We had four categories with winners in each, kids, adults, family, or group, and Best in Show. We had more than forty sponsors and vendor booths stationed around the ballpark, providing out candy or other trinkets to the patrons. And the Reds even brought two players in to do autographs, which was
That's nice.
Great. And Pumpkin Patch Photo Booth, or both, were a big hit this year, so hopefully you'll see some of those photos. And then, just a big thanks to all the departments involved making this happen, specifically Parts and Rec, PD, and Fire. And then if I may go on to the other
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
So, Make a Difference Day, Councilmember Hampton brought up, is this Saturday, October twenty-eighth? We're expecting more than three hundred volunteers to participate. There will be fifteen community service projects around the city as we mark our tenth anniversary for Make a Difference Day here in Goodyear. It's held on the fourth Saturday in October each year, and this is the largest national day of community service where volunteers around the world unite in a common mission to improve the lives of others. And last year, Make a Difference Day in Goodyear alone resulted in more than four hundred volunteers donating sixteen hundred hours of time in a single day. Just incredible. And then lastly, Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Event is this Saturday, the twenty-eighth. Residents, this is a multi-city event, so residents of Goodyear, Avondale, Litchfield Park, and Tolleson are invited to drop off household hazardous waste for free on Saturday from eight AM to noon at the Public Works Facility. And this facility is at Australia Parkway and Romley, just south of MC eighty-five. And then, this year, staff has worked really hard to improve the ingress and egress out of that site. Last year, we had some challenges, and residents let us know that it didn't work very well. And so, we've worked really hard to improve the traffic flow, so hopefully that'll be successful. And then lastly, for residents looking for more information, this event is detailed on our Public Works website.
Right. I don't believe there's any staff summary follow-up action. Is there, Councilman Fazillo?
Now that he's mentioned the Make a Difference Day, is there something, is there a program there?
Yeah, there'll be, but we haven't been notified of it yet, but
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, you will be a part of it, and we should get information on it. I, I don't have any, it wasn't presented to me.